Councilmember Wilcox. Mayor Proton Brown. Councilmember Somerville. Mayor Richardson. Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Simmons. Mr. Jones Chance. Six present, there is a forum.
Move to excuse, Mrs. Simmons.
Support. It's been moved and supported, all in favor. The motion to excuse.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda approval. Support. Is the move and supported to support the agenda as it stands? And we will register virus wants to have another resolution that we will add to this agenda is. Before we spoke, there was probably another agenda coming, another agenda item. So all in favor? Motion passes. And we have a motion to go into closed session.
I move that we want a closed session for MCL, two, six, eight, C, and P R personal evaluation for negotiation of what they're doing.
All right. Is the move, is there a second?
Support.
All in favor?
Mayor, this would need to be a roll call. Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
With six yes votes and one absent, the motion carries, and we'll go into closed session at 6:03.
All right, thank you. I move to return to open session. I will call that motion in just a moment. Okay. Everyone, well, everyone, we do have one back of the table. The meeting is now, I'm going to motion to bring the meeting back in order.
I move to bring us into the discussion.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor. Hi. Thank you. It's good to see our distinguished guests here. I'd like to call for introduction before we move on in the agenda. So we, I see we have our Congresswoman Debbie Dingle here. We also have our state Senator Jeff Irwin here. We have our state Representative Ronnie Peterson here. I want to welcome you all. I see we have our interim Police Chief Red Newhouse here, and we have our human relations, I mean, HR person with, and Mr. Dewan Fisher. We have our economic director and also our finance director, Mr. Joe Myers, and Mr. Reagan Basavika. So, oh, thank you. Now that we, I think I've recognized everyone that we have here. I'd like to bring a couple of changes. I'd like to switch presentations to ahead of public comment if no one has an objection or someone would make that motion for me.
I'll move to the agenda to with presentation.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. I see we have Mr. Ronnie Peterson, Representative Ronnie Peterson. Would you please come forward to the podium? Thank you so much for adjusting your schedule to be with us tonight. I felt that this was very important with you leaving office in, at the beginning of the year, and with me leaving office next week, I wanted to get it done before so that make sure. Proclamation. Be it known that I, Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ypsilanti, do hereby honor and commend Ronnie Peterson for his tireless work in government service for over thirty years, including serving on the Ypsilanti City Council, Washington County Board of Commissioners, and in the State of Michigan House of Representatives. And during that time, ablely representing the interests of the greater Ypsilanti area, obtaining grants and funding, including procuring additional state fire protection funding, obtaining state funding for Grove Road overpass improvement, renovation of the fourteen A District Court, human services on Town Hall Street, development of Spire in downtown Ypsilanti, funding for the Riverside Arts Center, African American Civil War Monument and Highland Cemetery, Thompson Block Building renovation, Frog Island Park improvements, and elected city council member, Washington County Commissioner, and Michigan State Representative. And those are just the few, a few of the things that Representative Peterson has brought forth as improvements for the city of Ypsilanti. I know you were very instrumental in organizing the east side. I don't know, it wasn't, what was the fact? It was a group of all the members of organizations and legislature, local municipalities leaders on the eastern side of the county, and so many other things that you have done and for the city of Ypsilanti that people don't realize. They just know that it happened, but they don't know who was really behind it. And many of these things would not have happened had it not been for you. During his time of public service, Ronnie Peterson took his job of public service to heart and served the public in an open and cooperative manner and worked for the betterment of the Ypsilanti area. Now, therefore, I, Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ypsilanti, signed this proclamation with great appreciation the first day of November of twenty twenty-two, given under my hand and seal of the City of Ypsilanti on this first day of November twenty twenty-two, Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor. And I just want to say on a personal note, I appreciate all that you poured into me, that you were one that serves and encouraged me to become active in city government, that not only did you encourage me to come active, but you mentored me my first years in this office. I appreciate all that you've done, appreciate what you've done for members of the community. People don't know that this is a true philanthropist. I know many people in the city, in the Ypsilanti Township, in Superior Township, that have benefited from his philanthropy giving. And he doesn't make a no big issue of it, and I'm not going to make one now, but I do know that many people are still in their homes because of his philanthropy, because of his generosity. Many people had heat during the winter because of his generosity. Many people had water because of his generosity. And I want to say thank you. I thank you for all that you have done for this community. I commend you, and I appreciate you. Thank you so very much. Yeah. Please have some words if you would like.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, honorable Mayor. Representative of the City Council, administrative staff and directors, and the citizens who make the city what it is today. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Miss, let me just say, a combination of relationship and having a lot of work with City Hall, Harriet Commerce, I always like to take very pride in it because of not only tearing down the buildings along Harriet Street, because Eastern Michigan requested we leave that charge, and it took a four-year effort to find the funding thing to happen, but it also added forty-seven thousand dollars through to the tax bill of the City of Ypsilanti. It's never taxed, except that's pay taxes. And it was a joint project of us collectively working together. And certainly, you replacing the City Council was a fine addition to this particular body, because you're full of nothing but honesty and integrity. And we're pleased that you have selected, we stay on the same block. I just want to mention to the council, thank you for the opportunity to work with you, the city manager of your various departments, worked extremely well with my office at this time, and in the past, whenever I called upon the city, whether it's John Bar, Mr. Bar, or other members of the administrative team, they responded very professional and very rapidly to respond to the issues pressing to this community. And so I say thank you. Another other comment I want to just make, Senator Irvin asking me to join in a proclamation to the mayor, is that I want to mention, take note, appreciate you considering tonight deliberating on naming a road after Miss Maddie Dorsey, who I had a privilege of working with, and she's a direct neighbor of mine, so a direct next-door neighbor to me as a kid, and I remember attending on council, and I don't even know her on council, who served in that period of time other than Dr. Rob, who was a prominent dentist in this particular community, served with her. So I hope that we do, if you pass that on council to name that particular road after, or that street after her, I think, I hope that you do take opportunity to Dr. Rob to participate in some form or manner. He's the only one left on the city council doing that here, agreeing with you, and of course, at council period. And I thank you, council members, once again, for all the respect and courtesy and professionalism you share with me in my office. Thank you. Appreciate that opportunity.
Thank you. We'll move on now to public comment. Do we have? Okay. I'm sorry, yes. I have a proclamation for Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist. He, I was, we made slight contact, and he was going to be here this evening, if at all possible. In his absence, I would like to, I would like to read it, and I will go back to the podium. Proclamation, known by all these present that, whereas, Michigan Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist II, an engineer by training, has been active in both the private and public sector. He works for equality and justice and serving the public and getting things done. An honors graduate of the University of Michigan in computer science. He had a successful career as a software engineer at Microsoft, hoping to build SharePoint into the fastest-growing product in the company's history. Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist continued his career as a social entrepreneur and community organizer, and then worked in local government to help make city government more responsive, transparent, and accountable to city residents. He cares deeply about community and the city of Ypsilanti, and has spent many hours of his precious time in the city of Ypsilanti, helping local groups work against all forms of violence, and especially gun violence. His efforts are deeply appreciated. Now, therefore, with deep appreciation and gratitude on behalf of the city of Ypsilanti, I, Lois E. Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ypsilanti, in light of his many fruitful dedicated hours of work for the city of Ypsilanti, do hereby grant and confer upon Garland Gilchrist II the title of honorary citizen of the city of Ypsilanti, given under my hand and seal of the city of Ypsilanti, November one, twenty twenty-two. And how this came about, Lieutenant Governor was coming to the city. I was seeing him almost weekly here, working with some group locally to bring about a change that was needed. And I jokingly said to him at one point, when I saw him, I said, if you, if I see you here one more time, I'm going to make you an honorary citizen. And he just kind of laughed. He said, and if you do, I'll rent me an apartment. So we'll see if he follows through on that. But he has been very kind and very gracious, and it has not been widely known what he has done for the city of Ypsilanti. So we will present, make sure that he gets this. While I am here, I will read the proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native American Heritage Month began as a commemorative work week that was first introduced in nineteen eighty-six from November twenty-third to thirtieth by President Reagan. And whereas since nineteen ninety-five, every president has issued an annual proclamation designating the month of November to celebrate Native Americans and Alaska natives. And whereas Heritage Month is a time to educate the public about tribes, to raise general awareness about the challenges Native people have faced both in the past and present, and in ways which they have conquered those challenges. And whereas Heritage Month is also a time to educate the public on the contributions Native Americans made to community structure, medicine, government system, and the environment. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, there are six point seventy-nine million Native Americans in the United States. Of that total, the state of Michigan has a total of fifty-three thousand three hundred and sixteen amongst its population. And whereas the state of Michigan currently has twelve federally-recognized Indian tribal groups. And whereas the state of Michigan is fortunate to have a great population of Native Americans that has impacted its land state, culture, history, politics, and economy. And whereas, it is important to highlight and recognize achievements of Native Americans as they continue their efforts in enhancing our communities. Now, therefore, I, Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ypsilanti, hereby proclaim November twenty twenty-two as Native American Heritage Month, given under my hand and the seal of the city of Ypsilanti, November one, twenty twenty-two. Thank you. I think we have one more presentation, and we will move to that, the Housing Bureau for Seniors Property Tax Exemption.
Yep. Thank you so much for allowing me to present to you today. My name is Yvonne Cutney. I'm the Community Education and Outreach Coordinator with the Housing Bureau for Seniors. I'll be presenting to you today on property tax exemptions, what they are, how other local jurisdictions in Washington County have dealt with them. I'll be talking to you a little bit about the Housing Bureau for Seniors, since I work for them, and I'm going to also be talking about the senior housing landscape in Washington County. So, the Housing Bureau for Seniors is a program of Michigan Medicine's Community Health Services. Community Health Services connects Michigan medicine to the communities that Michigan medicine serves by providing programs and services that impact the quality of life for its residents and the patients surrounding Michigan medicine. Next slide, please. The Housing Bureau for Seniors' mission is to inform and empower older adults and those who care about them by providing guidance and resources regarding sustainable housing in Washington County and beyond. We recognize that stable housing is imperative to the physical and mental well-being of older adults, as well as everyone else in our communities. Our organization is unique in that our primary focus is on housing for older adults. We're the only organization in Michigan that provides these services. We are free, and we serve older adults whom we define as fifty-five and over. Excellent. There we go. There we go. Yeah. So the Housing Bureau for Seniors has three main or core programs: foreclosure prevention, eviction prevention, and housing counseling. We have two annual events, Senior Living Week, which just concluded at the end of September. We also have Big Hearts for Seniors. Those are our two big fundraisers every year. We offer education to the community. We provide workshops on substance use disorders in older adults who have no when to move if an older adult is thinking about moving from independent living into assisted living. It also educates families, and we educate the public about the Washington County senior housing landscape. So our foreclosure prevention program provides, also works in conjunction with the AARP to provide a tax clinic every year and helps hundreds of older adults file their income taxes, homestead credits, property tax deferments. And we also offer, I should say, property tax exemptions fall squarely within HBS's foreclosure prevention services. By assisting older adults with applying for property tax exemptions, we're able to save older adults' funds that can be used for mortgages, utilities, food, and medication. Our services right now are more critical than ever before. Washington County has seventy-two thousand older adults over the age of sixty-five. We have thirty thousand older adult households. Nearly thirty percent of the older adult households are housing costs burdened, meaning they spend over thirty percent of their incomes on housing costs. By providing poverty exemptions, we can give them more money to spend on mortgages, utilities, food, and medication. And to give you an idea of how critical the housing landscape in Washington County is right now, next slide, please. I created this map with the assistance of Batch Geo. This is one year of mortgage foreclosures in Washington County. I started tracking them right after the mortgage, the foreclosure moratorium was lifted after COVID on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. And this goes up through October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Forty-two percent, or forty-one percent of the mortgage foreclosures in Washington County are occurring in the forty-one nine seven and forty-eight one nine eight area codes. Forty-two percent of the mortgage foreclosures involve older adult households. I've also had the opportunity to speak with the Washington County Treasurer's Office about the city of Ypsilanti and tax foreclosures. The city of Ypsilanti has four thousand two hundred and fifteen residential properties within the city. Nearly ten percent or four hundred and fifteen last year went into delinquency. And what that means is, if a homeowner fails to pay their property taxes for one year, if they're not paid by March first, they go into delinquency. A four percent administrative fee attaches to the property tax base. And interest then begins to accrue at one percent per month, or twelve percent a year. It makes it incredibly difficult for a homeowner to catch up with an additional twelve percent a year and a four percent administrative fee. And it's even harder for an older adult household that is often living on a fixed income, especially given the cost of living right now. So I'm going to talk a little bit now about the basics of property taxes. Next slide, please. Property taxes are a mechanism by which low-income homeowners who live in their homes can apply for reduced and/or waive their property taxes. They're often called poverty exemptions, but may also be called hardship exemptions or property tax exemptions. What's really important about a property tax exemption, by whatever name you call it, is that it is only available to low-income owner-occupied homes. And I'll clarify why that is so important in just a second. Next slide, please. So poverty exemptions are part of the General Property Tax Act in Michigan. They're codified in Michigan compiled laws to eleven point seven U. The exemption or reduction is in accordance with an applicant's household income. An eligible household may receive a twenty-five percent, fifty percent, or a hundred percent exemption, depending upon where they fall on the income guidelines of their municipality. Independent municipalities may set their own income limits, but the limit may not be less than the federal poverty level. So the federal poverty level sets, serves as a floor, not a ceiling, to who may be income-eligible for property tax exemptions. In twenty twenty-one, the federal poverty level was twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. While the federal poverty level provides a national standard for determining poverty, it results in an undercount of households living with economic hardship. So it's twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for everybody across the country. Other standards have been developed to address this, including the United for Alice standard, which is formulated for every county in the United States. For Washington County in two thousand nineteen, the bare minimum household budget, or the survival budget for a single person was thirty thousand dollars, significantly higher than twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty. HUD has also developed another standard. It's called the Area Median Income. In twenty twenty-two, the area median income was eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars for Washington County, for a single person. HUD has created gradations on the AMI, including thirty percent, fifty percent, and eighty percent. They're called extremely low, low. Oh, I missed one in there. I can't remember what it is. But there's some gradations there. Thirty percent AMI, or extremely low income, for a single person in Washington County is twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, also significantly higher than the federal poverty limit. In Washington County, seven percent of older adult households have income below the federal poverty level. An additional twenty-one percent have incomes below the Alice threshold of thirty thousand dollars. That tells you a little bit about where older adults are here in Washington County, and why poverty exemptions are so important. Households must apply annually and complete their local jurisdictions' application, as well as submit all the required paperwork. Generally, under MCL, under the Michigan compiled laws, every applicant must submit a driver's license. They must prove ownership of their home, and they must submit federal or state tax returns or property tax credit return, if they don't have to file federal and state tax returns. Applications must be filed annually, and they're only good for the year in which you apply. They get reviewed every year in March, July, or December. You can submit any time prior to one of those board of reviews to be considered for the entire year. Various jurisdictions have different paperwork requirements that could be included, including like declarations, asset limits. There are different asset limits all around the county, but those are the general requirements that apply to all of them. Next, I wanted to give you a screen about all the different jurisdictions in Washington County. Next slide, please. Might be a little bit hard for the public to see. Hopefully, you guys have got this in your packets. So this is a sheet that has compiled all of the poverty guidelines for the different jurisdictions in Washington County. We have twenty-six. So twenty-six different local units of government have created their own income guidelines, or poverty income guidelines, for property tax exemptions. or poverty income guidelines for property tax exemptions. 20 of the 26 local jurisdictions or local units of government have increased their poverty income limits for property tax exemptions so that more homeowners can apply and maintain their housing, which is especially important for older adults, who 85% of which would like to remain in their homes and age in place. If YPSI considered raising, the city of Ypsilanti considered raising their income limits somewhere on par with those 20 other jurisdictions. I wanted to show you what that would look like. Next slide, please. So, this is information that I compiled from the American Community Survey. Just part of the census data. Ypsilanti has 8,018 occupied housing units. Thirty-four of, 34% of them are owner-occupied. So, in theory, those 34% or 2,766 households may be eligible for poverty tax exemptions because they're owner-occupied, just what I talked about before. But they have to meet the income requirements and the asset limits and all the other requirements. So, currently, YPSI's poverty exemption guideline is $12,880. 154 households have income below $10,000. So, in theory, all of them could apply for the poverty tax exemption. In reality, last year, 11 did, and 11 qualified. If the city of Ypsilanti considered raising their limits to either 30% AMI or 200% of the federal poverty limit, $25,000 or $24,750 to be exact, or $27,180, because this year's poverty guideline is somewhere around $13,500. Another 104 households could be eligible for poverty tax exemptions. So, to wrap it all up... There are over 10,000 older adult households in Washington County that spend more than 30% of their income on housing expenses. Nearly that many have income below $30,000. Increasing the poverty income guidelines for poverty tax exemptions in the city of YPSI to 30% AMI or 200% FPL could provide relief to approximately 100 more households and make their lives a lot better. So, that's my presentation. Do you all have any questions?
I would just like to say that was really educational for me. And thank you so much for coming with us. Council, does anyone have any comments and questions?
Yeah, so Amy and I have kind of been discussing this as it was brought up by Yvonne, who also, by the way, is a city resident. I wanted to mention that as well. So, the comparables, if you look at, right in our chart here, you look at the two surrounding townships, Ypsilanti Township specifically and Superior Township, and both of those levels are higher than where the city currently stands. And as Yvonne mentioned, it's currently one of the lowest in the entire county. Yet has a very high cost of living, convert... So, this is why this was discussed and brought up, so that council can look at that and make some recommendations to increase that threshold.
Yeah, we actually spoke with Mr. Barr, a city assessor, and there could be a process. You said early next year, Mr. Barr, I think, did you?
Yes.
So, a council wishes to bring this up early next year. They could do so, and that would be the appropriate time to make those changes.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I think a part of that should probably be finding a way to get this information out to the other 143 people who currently qualify, who aren't... I'm guessing it's because they don't have the information. I know as a business owner, every year I get an exemption form for not having, you know, personal, not personal property. You have to pay the city's personal property tax. I wonder if we are currently sending that kind of notice out to residential households who may qualify? Or if there's some issue where maybe we don't know their income, and so we don't know who qualifies? Just curious what our process is currently for that, and if there's anything that can be done so that you get more of the people who do qualify in the loop. That seems like the easiest gap to fill. Maybe something we could do more immediately. I mean, not that we can't do this also, but... It's not really a question. I'm just starting.
Can I just make a quick comment? I would urge you all to consider, if you're going to modify the guidelines, the Board of Reviews meets every year in March, August, and December. So, they're going to be making decisions in March. So, keep that in mind in terms of the timeframe of changing guidelines, please. And yes, it is my job to reach out to those people and get them to apply for poverty tax exemptions. And I would welcome any assistance that the city wants to provide.
And you mentioned that the same board met in December?
Yeah.
Okay, so would it not be who has to get some information to them in December? Or if you...
So, this year's guidelines are already determined. So, the meeting in December has to follow those same guidelines, but next year can be changed as early as March, depending upon timeframes. And I am not, I don't know those, how the city works. But it would have to be the same guidelines for the whole year. Okay. And based on 2022. Thank you.
You were mentioning Mr. Johnson being sent to people that was qualified. It might behoove the city to just include a, just a small slip in the tax statements that go out, goes out, because it goes to everyone. And that people, that way, you wouldn't have to know the income to be ahead. They would just get the information.
I think for a lot of people, those get thrown away just because if you have a mortgage, usually your mortgage servicer is paying, and you don't even see it. And I had some questions about that, too, but that's...
Mr. Barr?
The assessor is working on this and intends to bring something to council early next year.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson, for coming. Appreciate that. Like I said, I learned a lot in your presentation. Thank you. Okay, we go back now to our comments.
Good evening, actually, Council. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jeff Erwin. I'm the state senator here. And if it's okay, I'm joined by our representative, Ron Peterson. One of the responsibilities and honors that I have as the state senator is to recognize people in the community who are doing amazing work. And it is an honor for me to be here tonight with my colleague, Representative Peterson, to present a special tribute from the Michigan Legislature to Mayor Lawrence Richardson. And this tribute is signed not only by myself and by Representative Peterson, but also by our great governor, Gretchen Whitmer, and our lieutenant governor, Garland Gilchrist. And I'm not going to read the whole tribute, but I do want to say a couple of things. One is that it is a special honor to recognize someone who has been such an important part of so many wonderful things in Ypsilanti for so many years. And you've served on this very city council for 22 years, which is an amazing accomplishment of its own. And it's just really great to be able to present you this tribute on behalf of the legislature for all the wonderful work you've done. So, let it be known that it is an honor and great pleasure to extend this expression of our thanks and best wishes to Lois Richardson and to commemorate her 22 years of service on the excellent Ypsilanti City Council and two years serving as the mayor of the city of Ypsilanti. It goes on to document a number of important things you've been involved in. It mentions that you are a licensed social worker, a certified teacher, a foreign missionary, and a public servant. It also talks about some of the great organizations and important efforts that you've been a part of, and highlights your important work with We Rock, focusing on equity by ending poverty, protecting voting rights, criminal justice reform. Talks about your involvement in passing the city's community benefits ordinance. And so, Mayor Richardson, you've been an important part of this community and this city for so long. And it's just tremendous honor for me to be able, on behalf of the residents of the 18th Senate District, present you with this special tribute.
I just wanted to make a few highlights remarks about the work with Mayor Richardson. Certainly, we lived on the same block with you, man, for City Council. And certainly, we've had a ongoing relationship. I want to take opportunity to just mention a few historical projects that are happening in this community. It is under Mayor Richardson's leadership and all of the City Council's support. The minister, outstanding administrative team that the community is working with. I just want to take out note to just mention that President and all of the concerned city managers, the city have directed and worked collectively with my office and staff, with Bonnie, who've done a wonderful job now heading up DPW. But let me just say, we could never had a road diet completed, near completion. It wasn't the city manager, Bonnie, who worked hand in hand and was tolerating with me. I think she gasped every time we had a meeting and basically got a lot of water, just to tolerate and patient. But of course, the $10 million improvement in techniques in this community is all about down the roads in the various communities that friends with me, whether it be Sadie, also on Whittaker Road and Huron Street. And I say that to say, those are historical markers. It's the first time you will have a major connection between Ypsilanti Township and the city of Ypsilanti by walking on Whittaker Road here in the street, crossing I-94. That what happened in just a few weeks. We just have a concrete shortage, and we're going to finish that concrete and get the project done. But because collectively, two units of government and the leadership of, of course, your mayor, council working collectively together, it's supported your city manager and Bonnie, who tolerant and patient to every meeting and every exercise. And that started early at 7:00, sometimes 7:00 and 7:30 in the morning, and sometime late in the afternoon, and sometime back home. And this all happened during the virus. So, you think that we shut down government during the virus. No, we did all of this major work during the heightened virus, as well as the road road improvement that you see taking place right now. It's a major chapter in Ypsilanti. You're getting fencing that no one has, they'll pay for theirs. You look at road road fence, and you will get also the same fences on I-94 to make it pedestrian and safe for those who ride bikes and those who walk with childrens across there. You will have that iron fence, it's a reflection on all the community other building, playing for there, and yours been paid for because I think with my good friend by the state of Michigan. And so, that's a huge addition. That's an $800,000 fence. And that's not including I-94 fencing. It would be there historically, long after we got those fences, still play it great. But I just want to make mention that this mayor, this administration, Brian Brass and McMullin, being city manager, and along with Bonnie, working collectively hand in hand, you have two of the largest projects in township and city in history to bring these communities together. You get to ride a bike, walk across it, take a person pedestrian by wheelchair, and that's what we noticed on the road. No one can get across road without, without a wheelchair, without a struggle. Now, you can get across, and you'll get across safe. The same thing would happen on I-94 border. Let's continue to work the community with the best interest of all of our citizens in this East Side corner. And I think you will have that, working, continue working relationship with my good friend, Jeff Erwin, Mr. Erwin. Sometimes we do them on the flip side. We're friends, and all of them, great. And let me say, I look forward to working with you as a city. This is my birthplace, my family, my white family has been in this since 1886. And we're not moving anywhere, and I'm not retiring. I'm too young to retire. Take care. God bless you.
I'd just like to say the walkway that is going over 94 on Huron Street... No. That was on the council agenda when I came on council in 2000. So, it has taken 22 years. And it took this man here, because this was his hometown, to push it through. It's something about your hometown. You just keep working on. So, I, as far as... Wow, proclamation. I thank you, Senator Erwin. Thank you so very much, and thank you, Representative Peterson. Had the pleasure of meeting with Governor Whitmer in her home, with the black mayors of the state. And as I said, LG Gilchrist and I have become old friends with all of the times he was coming to the city. So, thank you so very much for organizing this, putting it together, getting all the signatures. And it has been a pleasure working with you the years that I have been. I think you were a state rep, or soon after I came on council, you ran for, you became a state representative. And you did really great work then, and appreciate the work that you're doing now as senator and the work that you are doing, the good things that you're doing for the city. So, thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
How honored you.
Yes, thank you.
So, I want to join my friends, and I want you to know we were not coordinated. All three of us came separately, but together, because we're all together because we knew that this was your last meeting as mayor, but far from being your last meeting of hearing about Ypsilanti. My colleagues have already talked about all that you've done for the city, but, you know, people haven't talked about your lifetime of public service, your decades of missionary work, your coming back to Ypsilanti, what you did with Park Ridge, saving the community center. And there have been so many meetings that I've been in since I first met you. God bless John Dingle, who loves you with his whole heart and soul.
Me, too.
But as these two have said, you know, you joined the city council in 2000, but you've given a lifetime of service to many people. And you stepped into the breach here in 2000, took over as mayor at a time that this whole country was upside down. And when COVID was creating crises for so many families, I can't tell you how many nights she called me and said, Debbie, we got to get the vaccine. And I've gone, the assets of the United States. The mayor of Ypsilanti wants the vaccine. We got to get them here. And the governor came, and things got, Jeff would call me every night, too, just for the, so would Ronnie. I mean, we would all be, but you cared. And, you know, your faith, your faith has sustained you and sustained all of us. So, I, too, did a resolution, spoke about her on the floor of the House. I'm going to present this. But we all wanted to be here tonight to thank you for your love, your caring, for all you've done for this community. And wow, you know, you're not going to have the headache of being mayor of this town. You're never going to stop caring and being here and being here with wisdom and guidance for all of us. We love you, and we wanted to celebrate your last city council meeting as mayor and celebrate this night.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So much for Mike. I'm going to mask, we're... Thank you.
Thank you so much, Congressional Representative, Debbie Dingle. We met way back in 2002. And I began to work on the campaign for our dear Congressman, John Dingle. And I met you. And somehow or other, our hearts linked together on a whole different plane, whole different level. And I don't think anybody really knew that connection, but you and I and the Lord. It was something very, very special. I appreciate all the work that you have done, all that Congressman Dingle did on behalf of the city while he was living and serving, and all that you have done on behalf of the city since you have been in office. I supported you when you went into office. I've supported you since then, and I will continue to support you. And I know much of my support for you has been through prayer, and it will continue. A lot of people don't believe, but prayer makes a real difference. It strengthens us, and it keeps us moving along, and it does a lot of stuff that we don't have to do. So, I thank you so very much. And I thank all three of you all for thinking enough of... So I thank you so very much, and I thank all three of you all for thinking enough of me to come. And I'm going to be quiet because I promised myself when you first called me up here that I'm not going to cry. And so thank you all. Love you all. And I'm not going anywhere. I'll be around. So just look me up. Wow, that was all a total, total surprise. I guess it's nice to be nice and make friends. But anyway, let's move on with our council meeting, with our agenda. Is there anyone else for public comment? Mr. Tousen?
I want to concur with Ryan Peterson was saying concerning Maddie Dorsey. Something named after her. I really hope that council take that under consideration and do that because I knew it when I was a kid also. Because what I want to do, I want to clear the air on a situation that happened in my neighborhood. There was an accident that tore fence down, tore a street barrier down, and person got away. And there was a investigation staged on that particular situation. I wanted to be known tonight by the city manager and the council that I was the person that initiated the investigation by the people, Mrs. Ms. Myers. There was no police officer involved in initially telling them folks to file no complaint. It was Lee Thomas Tousen Senior. That's who did that. So now I, I, I want you guys to eradicate, get rid of retaliatory measures. It's no good for the city. It's no good for the community, and it hurts the folks that's trying to do good. I will forever encourage people to make complaints where it's necessary because that's what the complaint system is about. It was put together for that, and I will continue to do it. As a Ms. Dorsey, I wish that she was living so she could get the flowers that stood her up. I wish she was living for that, but so be it. I hope council considers and does it. As it pertain to Mayor Richardson, you know how I'm going to come after you. I'm not going to come after you politically. I'm not going to come after you socially. I'm not going to do that. I'm going to come after you biblically. You have finished your course. And you know what's laid up for you. I don't have to tell you that. You already know. You've done a good work. Now, servant, sit down and rest awhile.
Thank you, Mr. Tousen. Is there anyone else for public comment? Yes, you may.
I just want to take a moment, take this privilege to thank Ugly Mayor, Mr. Richardson, for all his service to the city, the community, all the residents of the city, always supporting me, always supporting the fire department, fire service personnel, and always being there when we need you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Counsel. Any other public comment? All right, seeing that, we will.
Mayor, let me check online.
Is there someone online?
If anyone participating virtually would like to make comment, please raise your hand. You'll have three minutes to address council. No hands are raised.
All right, thank you. And we'll move on to approving the consent agenda. And Councilmember Somerville, if you would like, you might, since you are the representative for the arts, you might, if you would like to express some of the things there, please do.
I was not, I, the last meeting, I had mentioned that I was not at the last, all right, so I don't have anything to add there. Resolution number twenty-two dash two four six, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, if the following items be approved. Resolution number twenty-two dash two four seven, resolution number twenty-two dash two four eight, and I so move. It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Mayor, we call the roll.
You call the roll on, okay.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxum?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Who has resolution twenty-two dash four nine, approving a contract and negotiating?
Resolution.
More folks facing the firefighting.
That's it. Resolution number twenty-two dash two four nine, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the collective bargaining agreement with the city and the International Association of Firefighters expired on June thirty of two thousand twenty-two, and whereas the city and IFF have been engaged in contract negotiations and reached an agreement on a new collective bargaining agreement for the term commencing on July one, two thousand twenty-two, terminating on June thirty of two thousand twenty-seven, with a three-year rate open. Now therefore be resolved by the city of Ypsilanti that the city council does hereby approve the new collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ypsilanti and IFF for the term commencing on July one, two thousand twenty-two, and terminating on June thirty of two thousand twenty-seven, as presented, and authorize the mayor, city manager, and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city after approval by the city attorney as to form and I so move.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Would you call the roll, please, Mr. Somerville?
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxum?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville? Motion carries with six yes, one absence.
All right, thank you. Resolution twenty-two dash two sixty.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city council of the city of Ypsilanti needs it necessary to comply with the state of Michigan, two thousand and eleven Public Act one five two as amended, and whereas the act contains three options for compliance with the Department of the Act as follows. One, hard cap option limits employers' total annual health care costs for employees based on coverage levels. Two, eighty percent, twenty percent options limits employers' share of total health care costs to not more than eighty percent, requires annual majority vote. Three, opt-out option, the city may exempt itself from the requirement for that by an annual two-thirds vote, whereas the city council has decided to adopt the opt-out option as its choice of compliance under the act. Now therefore be resolved that the council of the city of Ypsilanti elects to comply with two thousand and eleven Public Act one fifty-two by approving and adopting the opt-out option for the medical benefit plan coverage year January first, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and I so move.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Okay, seeing that, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxum?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, resolution twenty-two dash two five one, approving a one-year contract off of Blue Cross and Blue Shield and Blue Care Network benefits to eligible participating employees.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the council of Ypsilanti needs it to be in the best interest of the city to continue to keep health care costs in line with our budget. And whereas the current Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Blue Care Network plans will continue to keep health care costs in line with our budget, while still offering additional benefits to the active employees and retirees that are eligible to participate. Now therefore be resolved that the council of Ypsilanti approved a one-year contract from January first, two thousand twenty-three to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, to offer the following Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Blue Care Network benefit plans to all eligible participating employees and retirees. The Mini Blue PPO, Simply Blue PPO three thousand, BCN HMO, HSA, and Medicare Advantage. Further that, the council of Ypsilanti approves a one-year contract with PHIM to administer the self-funded wrap and prescription portions of the VCBS Mini Blue PPO program and coordinate all benefits and costs with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Michigan, and I so move.
It's been moved and supported. Questions, discussion? Mr. Wilcoxum?
I just have one question, kind of a minutia question. In the PPO and the HMO, there's HSA in the ECO, it's covered at a different rate than the HMO. I wondered why this.
Understanding the question you're concerned about the HSA amount, right, and HMO and PPO. So this year, our rates have gone up seventeen percent. So in order to keep costs, in order to tailor and convince our employees to go with a more affordable rate plan with the city of Ypsilanti, we felt that the HMO and making the difference between the HSA contribution would help steer those employees to making a better choice as far as selecting the HMO, because we are providing a different rate for the HSA.
That would like totally paying all of the HSA, two thousand, six thousand for the HMO.
Correct. All right.
Okay, now we have. Any other questions or discussion? Right now, Michelle Bowser, who's our broker on, she would just ask, she'd like to answer ones.
Yeah, I am here. If you guys can hear me, this is Michelle. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi. So I do want to just shed a little light on this, just give you guys some information. As Dewan had mentioned, this year, the city did receive a seventeen percent increase on the medical. In years twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, we've actually received a decrease in all three years from Blue Cross, Blue Shield. This was a rough experience period for us. To put it in perspective, paid claims for the renewal experience that this increase is based on are up seventy-six percent compared to the prior renewal experience in which we were given a decrease. Driving much of that increase also is a rise in prescription drug cost by a hundred and fifty-eight percent versus the same time a year ago. So we are watching this very carefully. Again, the good news is we are coming off of three years of decreases, but it is cyclical. There are years where we will see claims go up, and this is one of those years. And so while still trying to maintain the integrity of the plan and provide the best benefits at the most affordable rates to the employees, looking at both the PPO and the HMO, HSA options that we have in place still made the most financial sense this year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Fisher and Zett Bonsler Bowser. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any no questions or comments on some council? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxum?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Resolution twenty-two dash two side two.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti recognizes the work of Maddie Dorsey and her accomplishment as the first African-American woman elected to city council. And whereas the city recognizes that housing insecurity and affordability remain incredible challenges, and that the community benefits agreement with Renovari Homes is an historic milestone in addressing these problems. And whereas the Community Benefits Agreement Committee and the City Council Public Hearings received sufficient public comment and support for the decision to satisfy condition number eight in the community's benefits agreement with Renovari Homes. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved naming the newly created streets at Dorsey Estates in honor of Maddie Dorsey, and all those shall be known as Dorsey Lane and Dorsey Avenue, and I so move.
Support.
Supported. Questions, discussion, comments? Again, did you say? Seeing now from council, I would like to say I, too, grew up under Mrs. Dorsey. I, Mrs. Dorsey was very, very well-known throughout the community. And back then, we did. There was a black community here in the city of Ypsilanti. We were not just, we were not called the South Side, but we were, we just had a community. We had, our community had no given name. However, we had every single thing that we needed to survive. The only thing that we needed to come downtown for was to pay our, go to the post office, go to the life company, and to pay our gas bill and water bill. However, Mrs. Dorsey was a woman that stood up for what she believed in. She was not afraid and boldly. I remember she, and I wasn't living here at the time, but I was in constant contact with, with home. And I remember she and Mr. Will Hodrick, who was my great uncle, they stood and they marched, and they campaigned against urban renewal, and they said that it would do to our community exactly what it did. It destroyed the community, and now there's their neighborhoods. So I just want to say that I think that this is a very kind gesture of council. And, but I think in some way that there needs to be a a sign that tells the history of Mrs. Dorsey, so that it's not just Dorsey Estates, and people do not know anything about her. But I do believe that there needs to be a plaque of some kind that will tell her history because she was a very strong, strong, dedicated, black woman during her era. So, thank you. And you have something for us?
Yeah, I wrote the RFL, the resolution you're considering today. I'm here for any questions. And to give a little context, the Community Benefits Agreement with Renovari Homes requires public comment period and input on the naming of the streets. So during the Community Benefits ordinance meetings, this came up over and over again. And Maddie Dorsey really was a champion who was concerned with housing affordability, housing security, or the lack thereof. And so the CDO committee thought it was appropriate to name the streets after Maddie Dorsey. We received lots of public comment during that CDO committee, the meetings that were held. You know, even here tonight, you see a lot of folks who are really supportive of it. So I think the requirement has been satisfied by condition eight in the benefits agreement, and we wanted to really codify that with the resolution from council. Make sure we check that off, and it's something that council supports.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons?
I have no problem with studying. It's fantastic. I guess.
I have no problem with studying. It's fantastic. I guess I have maybe what's a stupid question. But since one's going to be Dorsey Lane and Dorsey Avenue, I'm guessing we're not worried about any confusion, right? Like there's not going to be like a one forty Dorsey Lane and a one forty Dorsey Avenue, right? The numbering will be sufficiently differently because the direction the streets are going, however. Correct. That was my only thing that came up. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Somerville?
Yeah, I just have a few. So I was on the CDO committee. And during that process, and Joe can probably attest to this, like her, Maddy Dorsey's work is part of the reason why we negotiated for more affordable units. So it got run up earlier on before we got to where we did with the levels of affordability. And one of the second points for me was if we're to consider naming this after Maddy Dorsey, it should reflect like her legacy. So she helped our committee really make the argument that we needed to really consider like long-term sustainability and how this actually reflects her work. So I just wanted to share that it was really, you know, empowering to, you know, know about her, learn about her, and actually use her history to leverage and get more affordable units on site. So it was a nice, I'm excited to see that.
It's thanks to her family who supported too, and we find it to be honorable to them. You know, we've been able to touch base. I was surprised Johnny Lawrence is related to Maddy Dorsey, because that was a connection that I was.
And I really would like to add, I think that it is significant enough to make mention that this being located at two-twenty North Park, when she was alive, Mrs. Dorsey was not welcome in that neighborhood. You can move on. If there are any more comments or questions, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, resolution twenty-two-two-five-three, and you have that, Ms. Simmons?
Yes, the resolution number two-zero-two-five-three, resolved by the Council of the City of Xolani, whereas in nineteen ninety-five, the Xolani City Council established the Xolani Human Relations Commission, now known as the HRC, to protect the human and civil rights of the people of Xolani. Whereas the mission of the HRC is tied to Xolani's indiscriminate discrimination ordinance or states that no individual may deny protection of the laws, nor shall be, nor shall any individual be denied the enjoyment of his or her social political rights. Whereas in April of twenty-twenty-one, the Xolani City Council passed a resolution establishing Juneteenth as a recognized and commemorated annual holiday in part of, in part to continue celebrating the end of institutional slavery in America, but also highlight the centuries-long and incomplete struggle to redeem the American creed of equality for all. And whereas the resolution further acknowledged the central and central role of slavery in government structured racism in our history and the moral imperative that we do all we can to solve and eliminate to counter slavery's enduring legacy of race-based discrimination and institutional racism. Whereas the voter suppression bills passed by the Michigan State Legislature in twenty-twenty-one, subsequently voted vetoed by Governor Whitmer, have now evolved into a signature drive called Secure My Vote, that could soon empower the legislature to pass the state measures without the ability of the governor to veto. Whereas the so-called Secure My Vote initiative submitted more than five hundred thousand signatures on Friday, July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, to empower the state legislature to pass voter suppression over the governor's veto. Whereas the City Council shares Governor Whitmer's concern that the effect of these initiatives and bills, if implemented, would be to improperly depress the vote in various communities, i.e. communities of color, different black voters, older voters, college students, and working-class people. Whereas many Michigan-based corporations have made strong public statements in support of Black Lives Matter, signed the Declaration of War on Racism, and signed a joint statement proposing voter suppression bills previously voted vetoed by the governor, left at the self-professed values. Whereas it is acknowledged that companies, including entities that are recipients of contracts with the City of Xolani, get campaign contributions for their own business reasons. And whereas the City Council believes the campaign campaigns are effective by corporations who not articulately self-profess values to elected officials and candidates who support the voter suppression bills from twenty-twenty-one, and the so-called Secure My Vote, our actions are inconsistent with those corporations' self-professed values. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Xolani calls upon corporations that express self-professed values and engage in political advocacy in Michigan to take concrete steps to align their advocacy with those self-professed values specifically by means that include communication to lawmakers and candidates that emphasize the importance of such persons' support for the self-professed values, and that corporations that express self-professed values maintain or withhold support on the basis of such persons' further saying. And if further resolved, the city administrator is directed to consider and report to the City Council on the feasibility of including in a city's procurement policies an evaluation of whether potential vendors' local activities are in further itself or in acquisition to such vendors' self-professed values. I therefore, I guess I'm, I'm so sorry, I was so long, I lost track of my. I saw the loop, sorry.
Support.
Thank you. It's the move and supported. It is a long, long resolution. This was a pattern after a resolution passed by the Anover City Council. If it wasn't this past Monday, it was a week ago Monday, oh, two weeks ago Monday. And it will be considered by Washtenaw County Commission on tomorrow. I brought this to council because the voting is so, is so important. You know, and now, over the last election, particularly in twenty-twenty, I learned that voting is not just a privilege, voting is a responsibility. Voting and voting were actually giving the people that we vote for permission to govern our lives or to really kind of in some ways control our lives, what happens on in our lives, for authority over our lives for the next two, four, six years, however long your term is. And when you look at that, when I looked at it that way, I began to see even more, how more important voting really is. And the, even the way that this resolu, I mean, the petitions were presented for this, for that proposal that's on the ballot, it was presented, and the name of it is Secure My Vote, when it does anything but secures the vote of the individual. So any questions or comments? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes, seeing as corporations have to make political contributions through PACs in Michigan, I would just be a little concerned about staff's ability to implement a any kind of safeguard in the procurement process, just because it's kind of hard to track down what or who, if anyone, they make donations to, it's not really tracked that well, especially for local elections. So I don't know if that part's feasible, but that's my, my only concern.
Ms. Simmons? Yeah, I think that's my concern as well. I mean, we're just talking about our overburdened staff and burnout, and so I think that's, you know, with our limited resources, just having the ability to be able to kind of track it and be, make sure that, watch.
I agree. I was concerned with the process of looking at.
I think if I'm not mistaken, most of our procurement is with unionized labor. And I don't, I don't know how much opportunity we really have for that sort of thing. I don't know how many contractors you have that aren't unionized.
Right, I don't have that number as well.
Guessing it's close to zero.
As I read this and as I talked with others about this, and certainly others that know a whole lot more, the weight of the investigating will not be on city staff. It would come from from larger groups that would have been, would have done the whole weighing it out. So that's the understanding that I have, that I receive, so. But the lack of less is all. Let's manage to basically to report to the City Council feasibility of including the city's procurement policies and evaluation of whether a potential vendor's political activities. So that is going to take some work, because I'll have to evaluate the vendors, which is do research. It's right in the resolution.
Well, it's saying consider and report the feasibility of including that. And so I guess you could consider and report back that it's not feasible.
Well, I was saying that tonight.
I know. So I guess that's, you know.
I'm kind of, I understand what you're saying. It also says whether it's potential vendors. I guess it's just saying the whole sentence.
Yeah.
Or in a position. Ms. Somerville?
Yeah, I also, based on past conversations, worried a little bit about staff's ability to add this on top of our writing, different systems that we used before we locked vendors. But I also, I've actually in the past, when we've had stuff in our packet, I've actually done research on specific companies, because like if I've had my own concerns about their political activity, obviously, we all have had briefly recently, within the last two years, that's happened with us. So I guess like, obviously, you know, this is something I believe in. And I guess we could all be practicing this like regularly in the decision-making. I've been doing that. If things seem questionable, I think it's like a good thing to, you know, just generally practice. Because, yeah, I do that in my, in my personal life, when, where I choose to spend my money. So I do think that we could still do this, even if it's not feasible, to have that kind of process. I think it could just be uncompromised for council to consider those things when we are making decisions.
Any other questions or comments? Would you call the role, please, Mr. DeWitt?
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we have boards and commissions nomination.
Your honor, you did ask for an additional resolution?
Yes.
That I think is on your table.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Well, no, it'll be two-five-five, since this is not added on, this was added on. I don't know actually if it was added on during?
During the agenda approval, the mayor indicated that she asked me to prepare this resolution.
So council wanted to add it, or the mayor, I guess, can add it?
Mr. Jones Chance, would you make this something to be involved?
All right. Did you say this was going to be two-five-five?
Yeah.
Resolution number two-thousand-twenty-two-two-five-five. Resolution adopting policy recommendations to save lives by interrupting violence is resolved by the Council of the City of Xolani, whereas in response to a series of tragic gun violence in the summer of two thousand twenty-one that resulted in the deaths of young men in the Xolani area, Mayor Richardson brought together a diverse group of stakeholders with a focus addressing community violence and saving the lives of our young people. And whereas this group of community members with flipped experience, representatives from community organizations and county township and city officials evolved into a collaborative known as the Community Violence Intervention Team. And whereas violence is a public health issue with three leading causes, really leading causes of death for people ages fifteen to twenty-four, being unintentional injury, homicide, and suicide. And then most of these violent deaths are directly associated with firearms. And whereas exposure to firearm violence doubles the probability of a young person committing violence in two years, and a majority of gun violence in our community is retaliatory in nature. And whereas a community violence intervention team developed a plan to address intentional violent trauma, and about fourteen recommendations for local governments, community organizations, and community members to adopt and work towards, including, one, setting a clear goal of saving lives by stopping violence; two, identifying key people and places striving violence; three, creating a plan for engaging key people in places; four, engaging key people with empathy and accountability; five, addressing key locations by place-based investment policing; six, placing responsibility to violence reduction efforts on at the top of organizations; seven, emphasizing healing with trauma and form of tortures; eight, investing in anti-violence workforce development; nine, setting aside funding for new stakeholders and strategies; ten, creating the Washtenaw County Violence Commission; eleven, building a community center in eastern Washtenaw County; twelve, building a community mural and safe breathing community space; thirteen, establish brief and loss community response protocol; and fourteen, establish a communication work system inclusive while working to cure violence. Whereas this list of recommendations collaboratively can be achieved if we work together as a community. Whereas the state of Michigan has invested thirty million dollars into communities to combat the increase in, the increases in violent crime in federal government, and the federal government has directed millions of dollars to fund a community violence intervention. And community violence intervention programs have been shown to reduce violence in some areas by as much as sixty percent. Now therefore, City Council of the City of Xolani accepts this list of recommendations from the Community Violence Intervention Team. That's the goal of saving lives by stopping violence as a top priority and supports the work of mediating conflicts and intervening before violence occurs, and connecting people who needed to needed resources and instructs the city manager to explore how our police department and other departments can act as lists of recommendations and work to make meaningful impact to saving lives, to save lives by stopping violence. And further, council appropriates the sum of, and this is left blank, to be used by the city manager to further these goals in collaboration with the county of Washtenaw. And I salute.
Is the move and supported? Any questions or comments?
I think we have the debate, the, about something.
Right. When I spoke with, or spoke with Mr. Varrabala, we were, and he's been in communication with the the county, they played a good game of phone tag, and finally got something together, but it did not travel through private space to reach him. But we were, he and, I spoke with Mr. Varrabala, and was bringing to council that the the county has put in, has set aside a generous amount of money, I believe it's eight million dollars to work, or work for this, on this issue. However, they were asking that of the other municipalities that were involved. And a lot of the murders have been centered around Ipsy Township, Ucine Superior Township, and the city of Xolani. It has been researched and determined that eighty to eighty-five percent of the killings are retaliatory. And you killed me, my cousin, and I'm going to get you. And it's involving also the community violence intervention team that is hired and operate out of the county, out of the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department. They, that team has been able to intervene and stop any number of retaliation. One of the things that we have learned and found is that the retaliation plan is made often in the parking lot after the funeral, before people, before they leave, they start making the plans for the retaliation. I don't know if you heard on the news, it was either in Pittsburgh or Philadelphia, just this past week, there were six people, I believe one was killed and five others that were, were injured. There were six people, I believe one was killed and five others that were were injured at the close of a funeral. And it was all, it was a funeral where somebody had been killed and it was all retaliation. So it's important to to be able to stop the retaliation. I do believe the county commission voted a nice start, nice thumb. To for the violence intervention team that not this team, but the violence intervention group that is working. Those that have returned citizens that have been hired by the sheriff's department. I did forward to council this today of the release that the sheriff. It was a three-page press release regarding. That team and the the money that the county voted for that team to operate. However, there are other things that are needed by the. If we're really going to try to bring an end or certainly a decrease in the violence. So my thoughts were that any money, I know that our budget is limited. That the sum of money would not just be a one lump sum, but that it would be paid in intervals out of the. The marijuana funds that come in. I believe that this would be those very good use of those funds to pour back into the the community. Just speaking of social equity, I think that that is one way that social equity could be alive and well and seen by the community. So I just wanted to offer that before council debates on what they want to be put there, that some and that. I believe that it needs to be a substantial sum. And given over in intervals, like I said, out of the marijuana receipts that come in. Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, so. Yeah, the county has done quite a bit, you know, groups like Supreme Felons. Three of the people on the charity farm, Washington County, my brother's neighbor, and others have received generous funding. For the work that they do in order for them to be able to continue it and to expand on it. I do think that the city should play a role and I I think. If going forward, if we could earmark our social equity fund dollars. To violence intervention for a period of time, you know, one year, two years, three years. Or at least tie it to potentially some some violence production. I think this is. Possibly the most important and the most critical area for these funds to go. Social equity doesn't matter much if you're dead, so. I I think that's an appropriate use of those funds and I can't think of anything more more pressing. So I hope that's considered, maybe not a specific dollar amount, but just earmarking those funds for this purpose. For a a period of time would be an idea.
I think that's a very good idea. Comments from this summer bill?
Yeah, I don't agree with that. I don't think we should, well, I think it depends. The money is already defined as we're supposed to bring it back from the community for community and support for youth and other things, and we've done that. But I don't really think, I have concerns about that going into additional policing, so I would just like to. I don't think that's a good use of it. I think if we're going to put it into the park and our department, that would be great. I think we should do that. Kids need something to do and we could do more intensive programming and giving resources to after school programs. So I just have some concerns about the broad language being used about cannabis money when historic, like. It just that that worries me, but I do just want to highlight that we just allocated five thousand dollars towards this. Through our youth mini grant, so I guess I'm not sure like how much, the county has lots of money right now in ARPA dollars that we don't have. They also get more money in the community mental health and public safety knowledge. So I guess, and they also get money for cannabis. We're not having facilities, so I think we should invest the resources that we get. From cannabis revenue into specifically the city of Epsomani, because this is a little broad. This initiative is goes beyond city, so I mean, when the county is already getting funding, just because we have cannabis facilities. I think it would be a mistake for us to sort of end this big bucket and we could focus more on our residents. So they're getting more money than we are for the community mental health and public safety mileage. They're getting money because we have cannabis facilities and they don't have to do any, they get it because we have them. So while our staff has to practice all of this, they just get revenue sharing because we have them. So I would like us to think about that. I think that we should invest those resources specifically to the city and it should not go into additional policing. But we already have given five thousand dollars like two months ago, so I guess I'm curious, like. Where and how is it going to be specifically used in the city?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I I guess I sort of understand your concerns. However, there are several other points here other than policing. I'm almost certain that these funds wouldn't be used for police department budget. To the point of. How will be used specifically in the city, and I definitely understand that, however. Violence doesn't work that way. If you're kind of, if you live in the city, you're going to get shot and. You know, and should have broke. The fact that you live at the city and different municipalities is not going to stop it from retaliating or it's not going to stop further violence from coming here, so. This does need, we do need to take an ecosystem approach. And I I do agree that while it's unfair, that. I'm not, I'm not really expecting a lot to come from our neighboring townships. Much like barrier busters, this may be an instance where we have to carry more than our fair share of the weight. And yes, we did spend five thousand dollars to create a mural and to pay the young muralists to do that. But that's a very small part of what's going to be required. This is going to take. A lot of work, it's going to take a lot of funding, it's going to take a lot of different approaches. The approaches outlined here are all research-backed and. To the extent that they haven't already, they will more likely than not help us produce violence and. There's nothing more important than human life and so, well, I get that some of it may seem unfair, I I kind of don't care. We we have to address this issue. I don't want to go to another funeral for a teenager and turn them on those. You know. If you're not proximate to the issue, I guess it can seem sort of academic, but it isn't. The county has spent and will spend far more than than we will. And I I don't see anything. I don't see anything that's in Congress with the use of. Social equity funds about putting it towards violence intervention, but we know that it's affecting. The same community that we're trying to help with the social equity dollars.
You're appropriate. Yeah, thank you. Um, so I I agree with Brian, I agree with Annie, which is interesting because it's like a little bit of both. I think maybe the point for the hard part for me would be saying that all of the social equity money would be just going to this initiative itself when. What we've used it for already in the past has also been like preventative and, you know, resources for young people and doing things that are positive. Within our community as well, and so I struggle with saying, let's just give it all without having specifics about what it's going to go to. When we have also been, as a body making this is allocated to, you know, important. Things that folks need it for within our community and maybe. One of the ways that we could do this is looking at the mini grant process, because that is another way that young people and that is a violent intervention method as well by giving money to. You know, both organizations that are all involved in this process too. To support, you know, anti-violence within our community, so. I guess I'll just need like more clarity about when we say allocate or set aside the funds for it to go towards this initiative, what does that mean? Because we're kind, we've done some of this. Outside of this formalized space and I would hate to lose that opportunity because there might be organizations or bodies doing. Work as we're saying collaboration that are not involved in this specifically, so. I guess that's one of my questions about saying set aside all of it for one thing rather than what we already kind of have been doing.
Maybe you can address that. Yeah, I don't think this is going towards any particular. Organization or anything like that. This is that we will use those funds for those purposes outlined in those fourteen points. And to some extent, we already have, and so those funds would be qualified. And what I'm saying is that we, like all the other things that are important to us, that we actually budget for them. And I think that absolutely that using that social equity fund is appropriate, is appropriate because there is a budget for that. And we just do it for a period of time, if it's a year or two years. And, you know, then we can, or we can revisit that policy at every budget time or something like that, but. I can think of far worse uses for the for those dollars. And this doesn't, this isn't to suggest that we haven't done some of this this work already.
So I guess my question was not to say that you were saying that I I think. I don't know if I can make a decision without more specifics of what we're going to use it for now because we're. I don't know how to say what I'm trying to get at, but we're we're doing some of this with some of these same community organizations. And so I don't, I guess I just don't want to say yes with a dollar amount to the resolution as it's written. I would like to say like, you know, talk about the things that we've already done and if you want to continue doing that as a part of this, like you're talking about, so that is very important. But I think that when we say put it into the crisis violence intervention team and there's already this pool from the county and it's these fourteen points. Though they are specific points, it's still very broad what we're saying right now, and so I just would like more specifics about what is, what are, what are we going to take on? Because we're not going to take on all fourteen, but maybe we can support with those social equity funds for this and that, like, you know what I'm saying?
And it's more when they, when folks ask like when Jamal came for Washington MBK and asked for the five thousand dollars. That we would be able to say, yes, we have it, here's a part of money, it's coming from. This seems worthy, it matches what we're going to use these for and gives you five thousand dollars. The the CDIT is not an entity that can itself accept any money, so. It would just be things that flow along these lines and.
If I may. Jack right here, this money would not be going to the. Intervention people at all, that group, that is totally funded separately from this. These are things on this list, these are things that. Oh, are done of of beyond that. For instance, I would have rather seen the five thousand dollars that was given to the mural be given out of these funds. Than out of the funds that were set aside for. For for the five oh one C youth groups. I think that would have been a way to do both, but still have the five thousand dollars there. If we have another five oh one C three come that needed five thousand. We could have, it could have been done a different way. These, I think these monies could, would be possibly given to other groups that would be, that are not, would not be eligible for those five thousand. Out of that twenty-five thousand dollars that's set aside for that. But for groups on here, that youth group that are serving youth or that. But I know that. Some, most of the. Funerals that are held, they're a real strain on the family. If some of the money could be used just to help some of the families because of of a of a violent killing. Some used to. Help with the grieving process. I know one of the things that this group, that the intervention team planned is some real. Grief intervention training sessions where people can come and because grief is so hard, so. There's money that will be needed for those. There's so many different things out of these fourteen points that will need funds. That will not be going, you know, in any way to the group that is funded by the. By the sheriff's department to do the community work. That's not, there are so many things, if you read through this, there are so many things that 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 could be done. That if, you know, if the city itself decided to do something, the money could be used for that. If the city wanted to have a, some kind of youth. Pull together whatever. Program, event, that money could be used for that. It's not necessarily, it will not go in any way to the people that are working. Through the sheriff's department that are actually doing the work. Mr. Sweet?
I guess I'm just still pretty confused, right? This resolution's very, pretty vague and there's a lot of probably and could be and possibly. And I feel like how do we put a dollar amount in target and spend money? That wasn't already, I think, recommended or discussed with. Potentially the finance team or the finance staff to discuss where, what this amount could be your recommendation from staff or a better idea of the budget? And how are we going to assign money to a project when we really don't know what the, like, there's no, I think it needs to be a narrower scope. This is too big.
It's not coming out of the budget. It would solely come out of the funds from the social equity money that comes from marijuana.
Wouldn't that already have been allocated to another project though? There's no, there's not money that's floating around. That's already been allocated, right? So how do we put money towards something like this? Or we really, this is so, there's fourteen points on here that. Like traverse issues that are happening across the country, so how do we put? This. How do you allocate funds or something? It's so broad. How are we going to know where this money's going? That's my question. How do we know where it's going? Yeah, and and how do you know it's out?
I think I could potentially answer some of those, but I think this summer bill, and maybe I could get you both at the same time.
So, yeah, just to refresh everybody during our budget, we've removed all the things that were previously allocated and we're supposed to go back and visit those. So funding for barrier busters to make sure that people can stay housed, that reduces violence. Making sure that people have running water in their home, making sure people have electricity reduces violence. We still haven't revisited our allocation, if any, to barrier busters this year. And that fund from the county without additional outside support runs out quick. So I mean, we've had a history of putting these these funds towards things that reduce violence and there's evidence. That shows that it reduces violence, but during our budget process, which seems like the appropriate time to talk about this. Would be where council can make those decisions, so there should be a process at the youth mini grant where there were due. We should counsel whoever is on council at the time should be able to review those applications and determine if this makes sense towards that goal. But we have things that we've left on the table from the budget season that we at the time were supposed to revisit and we still haven't. So we're almost back to the beginning of the year and we haven't allocated any additional money into barrier busters. So and that's what the funds have previously been used for, so I think that's something that needs to be. Like called out on part of this process, if this is great, and I think that the work done is super important, but. Like we need to take care of city residents with revenue sharing that we're getting, that we've already called out in the past and so that we're going to use to invest in our community. And I I get that violence doesn't have borders between jurisdictions, but what I'm saying is it would benefit the city. If we ask for more resources from the county who has more resources, they are getting money because we have cannabis facilities. They have never once asked us how they can be a partner in investing those cannabis dollars back into the city of Epsomani. And it's been dubbed for just equity, but what does that mean for the city? So I guess what the point of me bringing this up is that we need to be asking for more from them for cannabis revenue that they're getting for the work that we're doing. And the the stuff that we have to go through, all the meetings that we have had extra because of cannabis. And they're just getting funds and we have no idea how to draw the lines to where that's going, so I'm saying there's already money that I think we should be asking for to be put into this work. And it would be in collaboration and, but I don't think that we should take resources out that we could just put directly into the city. So I think this should be brought back up during budget time and council should consider a process similar to the mini grant. But there's a lot of money that the county gets. For things that we've either voted on as a community, like the community mental health and public safety grant, or things like cannabis operations. And there's ARPA dollars, we didn't get, we got enough ARPA dollars to barely cover our projected short. Um, and there's ARBA dollars. We didn't get, we got enough ARBA dollars to barely cover our productive shortfall from the first year of the pandemic. So I guess what I'm asking, this is rushed. This was not in our packet. I'm not against this plan, but this is very broad. I think we need to consider all of our options. We need to be asking more of our county partners. Because they have money for the last three years, they have gotten money that we have never gotten back in our community because we have cannabis businesses. So this seems like something that should be discussed continually for a few months during the budget process. And how we can better ask to leverage resources with the county.
Uh, Ms. Somerville, uh, I'd just like to say that, um. Knowing some of the young people that were, have been killed over the last few years, they have homes. Most of the, they. Most of the, not all of the young people that have been killed, they have not been homeless. They have had homes and many of them good homes. So you can't say that, you know, I guess I'm not opposed to, I'm all for keeping people in their homes. Uh, pay, helping people with their rent and all, but at the same time, and we don't have to. It's a blank. It does not have to be, um. All of the, the cannabis money or, but I do believe that. To show good faith that we are willing to work towards violence intervention. That we should put something, these are, most of, many of the children, the youth that have been killed have been our children. Right here in the city. And I've been to some of the funerals, I've been to some of the places where the shootings actually happened. And I've been to, uh, I've, I've encountered youth and, and mothers that are grieving. And will continue to grieve. There's so many things that, that need to be done to help with uh, just intervention. To stop in the violence, you know, and the after effect of the violence. It doesn't, you know, I'm, I don't know. Uh, I just, I do know that this is saving lives and will save lives. And by the way, the, the mural is going up. So if you haven't been down uh, here on the street, you can see it's on the, the wall of the um. War Hill. Mr. Jones Chan.
No, I don't know what.
Ms. Simmons.
I think, I think um, the issue here is not the, it's not the what, it's the how, which is often the problem with things, right? I mean, I fully support these efforts too. I think uh, they make sense and I'm hearing that. Others supported as well, but the concern is again, really about how we're going to do it. Um, and so I, I um. To me, I mean, it seems like a, a worthy use, obviously, of, you know, of say cannabis money and things like that. I, I don't necessarily like a kind of a blanket, you know, it's all going for, for, you know, and maybe we'll reevaluate. Um, I mean, I would be okay with the cap say designated money amount at the moment, but we did just designate some money. So it's not like we haven't done anything. I think we all have an interest um, and commitment to doing more going forward. Um, but I think we have to be thoughtful about our budget dollars too. Um, and so I guess. You know, I, I think I'm a little uncomfortable saying, you know, yes to just a blanket, hey, we're going to use all of our cannabis dollars. I do think we should ask for more from the county. We haven't done a good job with that. Um, but um, you know, again, I'm not opposed to putting. Our dollars towards these efforts. I, I fully support them. I'm not sure that this is exactly the best uh, way to do it. It's again, just to kind of a blanket statement, say. All these, you know, that, that uh cannabis dollars will go towards this. Um. You guys look rather have kind of more of a targeted budget or something tangible, but uh. But I don't, you know, it's this, this does seem like we just got it, you know, kind of on our desk. And uh, you know, this is something that maybe we need to think about or tail. Again, it's not, it's not the efforts, it's not the support, lack of support of, of what we're doing. Um, but is there an effort right now that needs funding that we need to consider that's urgent, that we have to decide tonight?
Oh, there's not an effort that's.
Okay.
That, that's before the group right now. I do have a question though. I have heard. I heard you say it and I heard council member Somerville said, we should be asking the county for money. What should the city be asking the county for money for? Ms. Somerville.
Yeah, I just explained it. They, I just explained where we should be asking for money for. They get cannabis revenue sharing because we have cannabis facilities in our community. And they've gotten revenue sharing for the last three years and we haven't seen a single penny of that. Now it's been like broadly allocated towards equity. But that seems like funding that would promote equity in the city, but it's actually being used. It's not just focused on the city where they're getting the support from. So that's one avenue, but also ARBA dollars, also the community mental health and public safety village. So there's.
We get community mental health, the child dollars, but it's how the county, how the city has chosen to use that money.
The county gets more money, the sheriff's department gets more money.
Yes, they do.
And that can be used in this way. And it is being used in this way by them. So I think that the point that me and a few others have been making tonight is that this is very rushed, it's very unclear. And it would make more sense if this was not through our budget process in a more um. Streamlined way, so we know exactly uh, how much. And that council will be able to review where it's being allocated to similarly to the mini youth grant, but. Uh, there's money, like the, the county has money to support this. I think it's actually, it, it doesn't satisfy future success if we are constantly.
The county is putting eight million dollars towards this project.
I hear that.
But what I, okay, so, but all they're doing is asking for contribution from, from the municipalities. They haven't said how much or whatever and.
So why do you have funding?
We're, we're presenting, we're presenting it coming from, and I suggested coming from the, the um cannabis money. Because so that it's not, not going, not, does not have to go through the budget process at this time. And because the city is, uh, we know the, that we're tipping on deficit. And so it would not interfere with the budget, budget at all.
It's not true. That money is factored into the current productive shortfall that we have. That was brought up to us during the budget process, which is why I'm raising the issue. They get cannabis money for no, because we have facilities. The revenue that we've gotten is factored into our projected budget shortfall right now. Reagan's not here, but that's a part of the budget process that he was very clear on. We removed items like barrier busters, like other youth support from our budget process this year. Because we saw the projected shortfall. And at the time, we discussed later revisiting that and how we could use that money to rein that staff into the community. But this was rushed, this item, it got put on during our meeting, in the beginning of our meeting earlier, and a lot of us have questions. And the point that I'm raising is that we should be asking for more from the county. Maybe the county should not be asking the city. To put like the small amount of money that we have put in our community into this big pot. That's what I'm asking. I'm asking us to think about it and to ask for more because I think we should be asking for more.
Well, Mr. Wilcoxon, you've been quiet. Do you have some words of wisdom for?
I hope so. I hope so. I also kind of say, um, and the fourteen points are great and we adopted those, a resolution that we all committed to work towards those as well. I think the, the amount of money that the, the county is getting um, surpasses anything. This is a. Let me choose my word carefully here. Um. When we went through the budget, um, there were several comments made that that money that comes from our campus. Um, revenue sharing was not a separate line. We had this conversation with Reagan and. Um, and the point at the time was that's not sitting separate, it can be incorporated into the budget as it was stated. Um, and it's there. Um, there was not a line item that could be brought out of that so that we could tap into that at any time that was put into the uh, goals that we set at that time. So to come back and have this go the other way and have the argument, well, you know, there's this money sitting there, we, we've already resolved that. Um, during the, the goal setting, um, session earlier this year. Um, I also agree that this is, this is a, you know, the commitment here and making, making uh, a gesture. He said that we're committed in doing this and putting dollars behind it is, is one way to, to speak to that commitment. Um, whether that comes with, you know, the issue here is that. You know, this, this goes into a, you know, if there's a, a dollar amount put into this fine. Um, then that's at the city manager's discretion and not at the council's discretion on how that gets used. It's, it's to be, I mean, the, the relevance of this, the city manager defer to these goals in collaboration with the county of Washington. You know, if we're accountable to our constituents and we have no idea how this is, is, is happening. Um. I, I just can't, I can't agree with that. Um. So I, I think it's important that we take this and, and uh. Are committed to the fourteen point and that, you know, I've made notes here to, to bring this up in the goal setting and, and have. Um, specific program that this money can go to. That address, you know, we're not going to be able to cover all fourteen of these things. And, you know, putting it to the county to do that, um. You know, the points were made, but the county has a lot more money than us and they haven't contributed the way that they should have. Um, and I agree with this. I mean, that's, that is one of the issues that has come up in this, in this election cycle, like, you know, what, what is coming back? Um, but I can't support this. I mean, I, I, I appreciate the effort. I appreciate the, the sentiment of. Being able to commit to do these things, but I think it has to be focused and it has to be well, and not um. Taxing, you know, tasking the, the city managers come up with how this works. Um, so, you know, short of this, I would take this into advisement and, and. Address this at the, at the goal setting there is.
Since this was a resolution that I brought for, um. Brought to the, to the, I would like to add. That we remove the and further. Portion and go upon a resolution to support. The. Community violence intervention team and the fourteen points that have been proven to um. To stop the violence. I cannot make there as a amendment, but I put it out there, someone would like to offer that.
I will offer that as an amendment.
Thank you.
I knew that uh. We've been, the resolution uh, twenty twenty two, two, five, five. To strike uh, the last paragraph and for the council appropriate, some like to be used, the city manager. To sort of use in collaboration with the council.
Is the move and support it to add a friendly amendment to this resolution to strike the last paragraph? Uh, Mr. Farr.
The city clerk is asked if it's appropriate for members that were serving on the team, the community violence team to vote. In my opinion, that would be correct. That would be appropriate. Might be good if, if you did serve on the team, just note that on the record.
Thank you. Oh, is this discussion on the amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just for clarity, when the presentation happened. We didn't make any, we didn't do an official, I'm asking the clerk, I can't recall, was there to adopt this when the presentation was made to council? The fourteen point plan? I, I feel like we did that already. Yeah, so I think this is redundant because we, we voted to accept the fourteen point plan then, I believe. I'm, I mean, I have no problem voting on it again, but I think we actually did this without that, that portion. When that, the group came, Jeanette and Derek and everybody came and presented to us and we had. A resolution maker.
I can't think of it off the top of my head. I'd have to.
I'm sorry, I'm just bringing, I guess I'm just putting it out in discussion. I think we did this, but if we, I mean, I have no problem voting on it again.
I'm not sure, Ms. Darla, are you saying that you don't?
I don't, I don't recall. I'd ha, I'd have to check.
I don't recall.
Can we just hold on?
Sure.
Would you call the role on the amendment?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes, I am a member of the um. Community violence intervention team.
Okay. Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes, I'm a member of the team.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Is there any more discussion on the motion on the resolution? Seeing now, we can call the world.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, uh, yes, that brings us to uh. Board and commission and we do have a um. Media work on the planning commission, Sean White. And expedition date is five one twenty twenty five, so. Um. Do we need a vote on that or we've already voted?
This is just a nomination.
A nomination, okay, thank you. All right, um, any board and commission communication, seeing I'm here, VA's on reports. Police advisory commission?
Yes, um, that meeting was held last Thursday. Um, interim chief Lucas presented on the monthly reports on the county, the council. The city manager also attended and gave updates on the process for research. Um, with MML on the, for police chief. Um, the commission was able to ask questions about that, about what the timeline would be. And so once that comes out from MML based on the package that the city has chosen that will be shared. Uh, not only council, but with the police advisory commission. Um, the commission also came up with um, a wish list of sorts. Uh, of characteristics and things they would be looking for um, in a new chief. And that was going on by the, the body and. Will be forwarded, has been sent to the city manager so that when she is meeting with MML to kind of come up with a job description and a posting. Uh, well, posting would rather, um, some of those things, if not already, they will be considered um. Between her and MML and building out that, that posting. Um, and then typical updates were given, um, and the body is just, is trying to figure out now. Um, in what ways they can best support uh, the city when moving toward community engagement in this process. Because we know that it's top of mind for many people. So it was a pretty, it was a pretty productive meeting. And I think people left feeling like they had a better understanding of what the upcoming process will be. And that it could take a few months for us to potentially have um, a candidate uh, for chief. But that there would be opportunities for uh, input and participation on all of those from council to community. Uh, in the process, so, yes, okay. And then I guess HRC is out there. Sorry, they may ask questions.
Your relations commission has not been, we uh, we definitely need. Members.
Oh, I think, so it was on their agenda actually about merging the police advisory commission and relations commission. And the body unequivocally basically said they don't want to do that. I do think there was some misunderstanding about what merging them might mean or what the idea was, but uh. There may be some ongoing conversations, but at first glance, I see they wanted to even go further in the conversation. The police advisory commission would say they were not interested in.
All right, thank you.
Arts commission, arts commission hasn't met since the third week of last month. The next meeting is on the seventeenth and I don't, I think that's after our meeting, so.
The arts commission shouldn't be meeting on the seventeenth.
Oh, I thought it, it's the third.
Police advisory commission meets on that, on that day. They already approved it prior to the arts commission. I'll talk to. They already approved it prior to the arts commission. I'll talk to at least.
Okay. I guess, okay, sorry, I can have it wrong. I saw it was the third week, but I could, it could be the second.
Arts and recreation commission?
Uh no updates since our last meeting.
Uh sustainability commission?
Uh no updates.
The story this great?
No updates.
Thank you. Planning commission?
We were all there. And uh.
Well, this might be a time to to talk about some of the things that might have come out of that, like needing.
Um I'm actually, I haven't uh requested any update from any of the members or from staff about uh. Some of those changes that we discussed, so I can do that this weekend follow up.
Okay, thank you. I want to go to board of appeals.
No appeals.
Okay, thank you. Uh DA's on reports, um. Simco had its general assembly. And I think maybe we might have met since then. I think we did. So uh there's no update. Washington area transportation. Um I don't think there's anything dramatic to. Urban County?
Beats tomorrow.
Okay. It's the Lanny Downtown Development Authority.
Uh we have very successful community and the park. Uh we might bring that one back. It might be the first one we bring back. It was a rock or a picture show. And uh the 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 community seemed to really love it. Uh reported free member, election officers, no trans were done and they're updating numbers to the park commission for the member. I'll give a resolution.
Uh friends who have been to school?
Um they've met while uh I was at MML and my head's blank.
Hi, Centennial Committee. We couldn't have a meeting last week because we had a new quorum, so I'm actually going to bring recommendation up to the. The council probably very next meeting to remove some folks who have been showing up, just so we can have quorum. And on the outset of that, we are uh adjusting some of our plans. Um due to business closures in Los Angeles, um one of our events, so we're moving our years event to downtown. Um because it's gonna be hard to um. It's gonna be hard to spend a decent amount of money on the event. And expect one business to meet the band of hundreds of people who would attend, so we're shifting it.
Thank you. A council proposal, and we'll start with Mr. Jones.
I have. No council vote.
Mr. Wilcox?
I've been getting complaints about. Or mentioning this to Joe and and sitting there. Um there's a station on Washington that is uh the city has entered into the consent decree that. There are certain code violations and they continue to. Be in noncompliance with the consent decree. Um and Joe informed me earlier that uh this is usually left. Big plan and we just have to change it. On that, but the neighborhood uh residents are are still, um this has been going on for years. There's still the pressure. This is one of those things that you go into court and. One of the ways it does follow. The staff have been um. You know, pretty good at at pursuing this, um and the courts have not responded. It's frustrating for staff, it's frustrating for the residents. It's something that will be.
Thank you. The Somerville. Um yeah, I wanted to utilize this time to just mention. Uh although I probably won't be on council when this happens, I was really delighted by Ivan's, well, not delighted. Not a great issue, but I think that we can do more to make sure that our aging population can age in place um. More in the city, because if you look at her map, a lot of the red dots are in the city. Um so. I think, you know, it's, I'm glad that she brought the issue to our attention. I really hope that council will consider matching the surrounding communities so that more people can utilize the program. And yeah, I think it would just be beneficial just for long term. Um it'll save the city and the county resources if people can stay and and so they were for their aging, so. Hopefully that will happen next year.
Thank you. This uh Mayor Proton?
Well, I'll wait for that, but I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments that were assured earlier tonight and congratulate you on twenty two years of service.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Um no proposals, thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you. Mr. Sweet?
Uh I just wanted to wish uh clerking, the team in the first office and the rest of the staff, they're gonna be helping with the election, a very. Election next week, and that's been a big process and a heavy lift. Uh for all the staff, so I hope that really goes well um in the city of Oakville. And then also mayor, congratulations on your dedicated time. So I'm very proud of you, you know, very, very awesome.
Thank you. All right, um. Communications from the mayor, uh thank you for those uh your sentiments that were just expressed. And I certainly was not expecting um. The our state representative, state senator, nor was I expecting Congresswoman Dingle. Um to be here tonight. I, it has been a real pleasure to have served the last twenty two years. And I consider it most appropriate that the walkway across ninety four is being completed. As I said, we were discussing that when I first came on council um in two thousand. So uh it has been a um. It's been a real experience. It's been a learning experience, a growing experience. Being on uh being on council and being here this long. I appreciate all of the open doors that just serving on council. Uh open to me. I would encourage uh council members to. Uh be active with the Michigan Municipal League. It is a very good organization. I have learned a lot. I have, through the league, I have seen uh and been places in the state of Michigan that I probably never would have gone before. Or gone ever. So um and it's, thank you for uh. We're working with this uh this council. It's been um for the last two years and. Um serving as mayor during the pandemic, uh coming into the seat. Uh and serving those two years. It has, it was interesting. I think it was probably different had uh we not been locked down for a good portion of that time. But um Itzalani is my hometown and I do love and care about our city and. As I said, um I'll be around. Um Mr. Chusen was really off base when he said it was time for me to go and sit down. Uh he is not my boss. He does not give my, or I take, I take my directions from. Of of being much higher and um my instructions right now are. Um I'll be around, so. I'll be seeing. The managers. Thank you. I just want to thank staff for being here tonight and I just want to direct your attention to the CIO. If you have any questions, just. Uh communications, Washington Regional Resource Management. Those two things. Anyone for public comment? Yeah. Please state your name.
Michelle King. So I just wanted to say, first of all, good evening, everybody. I just want to say thank you for serving us for twenty two years. I appreciate it. Thanks for serving us with uh and while your time, your time is over as mayor, I know your work will continue. And I want to personally say thank you for helping me be a mentor and a leader for me as I embark on a new chapter in my life. So thank you for your investment in my life.
You're welcome. Thank you. It's been a pleasure. That is one of the things that I have. Certainly enjoyed doing over the years, um is being and recognizing potential in people. And encouraging them there and um. Oh, uh want to offer, um I put it in writing earlier this week. To uh Mr. um Melinda at his office. And I do uh certainly appreciate all the work that you and your staff do. And I know that this is a very busy time for you and um. But I also appreciate the effort and the the extra work that your staff does at this time. And they do it uh very pleasantly. Uh that hasn't always been, over my twenty years, that hasn't always been. The, what was coming out of the pro's office was pleasant. But thank you that we do get lessons from your, from your staff. We appreciate that and um. Thank you, Mr. Bar, for being steadfast over the, over these years. It's been a real pleasure to work with you. You were here when I paid and you're here when I leave. So thank you very much for all of your input and all that you do. And Mr. Sweet, I believe you have the, how about it?
Yep, resolved by the council of the city of Itzalani, that the city council meeting be adjourned. I called by the mayor or three members of the city council and I saw.